I call the Tuesday, June 20, 2023 meeting of the Louisa County Board of Supervisors to order.
Mr. Chairman, I move to go into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A5 to discuss the prospective business in the Kukui District and Middletalk District where no previous announcement has been made of the business interest in locating the county and pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7 and 8 to consult with legal counsel and staff about potential litigation regarding property in the Patrick Henry and Kukui District and pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A78 to consult with legal counsel and staff about Dowling versus the Board of Supervisors and pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A78 and 29 to consult with legal counsel and staff about the award of potential public contract in the Jackson District where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position negotiating strategy of the county.
And properly moved to say that we go into closed sessions or any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion passed, adjourned, and closed session.
And turn around and face up.
Turn that way, yeah.
Thank you, Chief. All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the public. This is a resolution recognizing Louisi County Animal Control Chief Alyssa Ellison on receiving an Animal Protection Heroes Award and being recognized by the Virginia Animal Protection Collaborative as a titan of animal protection and welfare. Mr. Goodwin.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the public. This is a resolution recognizing Louisi County Animal Control Chief Alyssa Ellison on receiving an Animal Protection Heroes Award and being recognized by the Virginia Animal Protection Collaborative as a titan of animal protection and welfare. Whereas, 300 Virginia animal welfare leaders joined over 400 second graders in a celebration at Busch Gardens Abbey Stone Theater on May 11, 2023 to celebrate the students' efforts in finding forever homes for 140 animals and efforts of local law enforcement officers, animal control officers, and welfare and shelter advocates throughout the Commonwealth. And whereas Attorney General Jason Miarias and his family, along with OAG Animal Law Unit Director Michelle Welch and her team, Maggie Cleary, Deputy Secretary of Public Safety and Homeland Security, came together to celebrate and honor animal protection heroes from law enforcement and prosecutors to animal welfare advocates and shelters. And whereas, over 70 organizations, individuals, and volunteers across Virginia were recognized for their hard work and dedication on behalf of animals and were presented with an award from the host children. And whereas, among those who received an award was Louisi County's very own Chief Alyssa Ellison, who was recognized by the Virginia Animal Protection Collaborative as a titan of animal protection and welfare. And whereas Chief Ellison has brought hundreds of animal abusers to justice over her career and has never failed to answer the call from the Virginia Animal Fighting Task Force. She has provided resources to a number of localities and allowed her officers to assist in complex investigations into large-scale animal abuse cases involving hoarders and horse abusers. Chief Ellison is the personification of leadership in animal crime and is an incredible asset to Louisi County Sheriff's Office and to Virginia as a whole. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Louisi County Board of Supervisors hereby commends Louisi County Animal Control Chief Alyssa Ellison for receiving an Animal Protection Heroes Award and for being recognized by the Virginia Animal Protection Collaborative as a titan of animal protection and welfare. Congratulations, Chief. Supervisor Jones.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Keep talking. 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 All right.[1797.34]
Second recognition is recognizing Lieutenant Patrick Sheridan and K-9 Alley on receiving an Animal Protection Heroes Award and being recognized by the Virginia Animal Protection Collaborative as a titan of animal protection and welfare. Mr. Goodwin and Lieutenant Sheridan, if you and Alley could come up into the well?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the public, this is a resolution recognizing Louisiana County Sheriff's Office Lieutenant Patrick Sheridan and K-9 Unit Alley on receiving an Animal Protection Heroes Award and also being recognized by the Virginia Animal Protection Collaborative as a titan of animal protection and welfare. Whereas, 300 Virginia animal welfare leaders joined over 400 second graders in a celebration at Busch Gardens Abbey Stone Theater on May 11th, 2023, to celebrate the students' efforts in finding forever homes for 140 animals and efforts of law enforcement officers, animal control officers, and welfare and shelter advocates throughout the Commonwealth. And whereas, Attorney General Jason Miarias and his family, along with OAG Animal Law Unit Director Michelle Welch and her team, Maggie Cleary, the Deputy Secretary of Public Safety and the Homeland Security Team, came together to celebrate and honor animal protection heroes from law enforcement and prosecutors to animal welfare advocates and shelters. And whereas, over 70 organizations, individuals, and volunteers across Virginia were recognized for their hard work and dedication on behalf of animals and were presented with an award from the host children. And whereas, among those who received an award was Louisiana County's very own Lieutenant Patrick Sheridan and K-9 Partner Alley, who were recognized by the Virginia Animal Protection Collaborative as a titan of animal protection and welfare. And whereas, Lieutenant Sheridan has been training bloodhounds and training law enforcement agencies on how to use bloodhounds in police shoes for over 20 years. He is recognized as an expert in bloodhound training and use by Virginia agencies nationally and internationally. He has been awarded the Life Saving Award from the Virginia Bloodhound Search and Rescue Association for his work with K-9 RZA. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Louisiana County Board of Supervisors hereby commends Lieutenant Patrick Sheridan and K-9 Alley for receiving an Animal Protection Heroes Award and for being recognized by the Virginia Animal Protection Collaborative as a titan of animal protection and welfare. Congratulations, Lieutenant. Chairman Adams.
Congratulations.
Oh, now I'm jealous. You're touching the dog.
You had her all to come, and I got her.
Her nose smells, Dwayne.
Well, I will say before we give the presentation that the Louisiana County Sheriff's Office K-9 Unit is recognized both statewide and nationally under leadership of Sheriff Lowe and Lieutenant Sheridan. And Alley has been involved in a lot of great rescues and, you have reason. I can tell you from experience, if you sit beside her very long, you better have a towel or something because you're going to be cruel. Very proud of her, and very proud of you. Congratulations.
For those of you that are here and watching, you just saw the highlight of our meeting since we had K-9 Alley here, so that was exciting. Thank you all again very much, Sheriff, all of you. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Then there were four.
Ms. Purcell, yes, you're still here. Okay, good. You're always here.
I'm going to leave it, Alley, too.
Next is our public comment period. I don't have any cards, and I don't see anyone here, so we'll close the public comment period. Next up is our information discussion items. The first presentation is a report from VDOT, and Mr. Thornton is here with VDOT.
Well, Mr. Thornton's coming up. His report is in chapter, it is in page 86 of your board package. If you'd like to follow. I don't know if I can follow the K-9.
Dogs and small children. That's, I mean, that steals the show every time.
We've got to talk about scheduling. So, good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, Mr. Goodwin. So, our crews have been working on shoulders, ditches, and pipes and knowing since I was last in front of you. If you've seen the work on 22208, we have contractors that'll be doing shoulder work the rest of the summer. We're trying to get the main throughways going to the school to and from while school's out, and then we'll be focused on other areas of the county where we're not impacting school traffic. Also, our surface treatment crews are in Louisiana this week, and they should finish up probably by the middle of next month, weather notwithstanding, and that should complete all of our surface treatment work on our secondary routes. And then with regards to the Hamilton Road Bridge, so our crews have submitted the plans to our environmental division. Our environmental division has reviewed those plans, and they have submitted it to DHR for their review. DHR received those plans on June 13th. There's a 30-day review time on that. They have expedited that up from 45 days. Once they have given their comments on it, if everything's approved, we already have the materials with us, and we're ready to go. We anticipate those repairs will take probably one to two weeks. We'll be doing those with State Force crews. So at this point, we'll just wait to see what DHR says. If it's to the affirmative, I'll let you know, Mr. Goodwin, when we plan to start, and then we set up public notes. As far as the Section 106 for the overall rehab rehabilitation, we are still working with our third-party facilitator to scope what those meetings on Section 106 will look like. I still need a few contact information items from that.
Section 106?
The Section 106 for Hamilton Road, the board had requested that we move forward with that officially. It had been March. So we have reached out to a third-party facilitator, which is at UVA. They are working on developing a scope for us so that we can get an estimate, and in order for them to do that.
Is the bridge replacement?
Replacement rehab, the 106 process determines what we're going to do with it.
Or Ford crossing.
Louisiana is a consulting party, so that can be a recommendation.
I'm serious about the Ford crossing. That's a really good idea.
And then, last thing I had, we met with County Administrator and Supervisor Jones. There is a pilot project for Route 15 from the DDI up to the Gordonsville limits. That project is a maintenance project, but we're calling it a pilot because we're bundling the maintenance items together. Some of the maintenance items are going to be the shoulder widening, pipes, ditches, outfalls, headwalls, paving. We're going to do some repairs to the Walmart Distribution Center entrance, and then we're going to be capturing all those assets in what they're calling a digital twin. So we're going to have live assets tracked digitally through our GIS program. Hopefully that allows to do some predictive modeling. It's called a pilot because we're doing all this maintenance work, uniquely bundling it together, so that in a two-year cycle, 15 from the DDI up to Gordonsville will be essentially brand-new. And then we shouldn't have to touch anything on it for some time after that. So look for that to be out this fall. There will be a project website set up for that, so anybody that wants information on that, as soon as that website goes live, we'll provide that link. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
Mr. Williams.
Do you, do you coordinate the trash pickup with the jail, or do we do that? Who does that?
Our area headquarters staff does that.
Okay, I saw them picking up trash in Orange the other day. So have we got any crews working the county?
We have not been able to get any for Louisiana. We've gotten them for Flevanna and Orange.
Why not Louisiana?
Yeah.
They, they're not sending them to us.
Tell them we're going to stop sending prisoners.
Could it be the coordination with our sheriff's department, too? Because it takes, the sheriff's office has to coordinate.
I don't have any idea.
It could be something like that. I don't know.
I'll see where the pickup is.
I saw them in Orange the other day, and I was like, hmm, I didn't see anything in Louisiana.
Yes, sir. We have not been able to get them for Louisiana County here.
Tell them, do not send our Louisiana prisoners out to other counties until our county's clean. That's a good idea.
Just interested in why, if you could just find out why.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Miss, anybody else have anything? Two things. One, I talked to you about it today on the phone, and that's where it's crossroads at 4th of July. Did we get anything?
I have not gotten a response back from my area headquarters yet. I will send you an email on that.
Yep, no, no problem. And I noticed, I guess it was last week, I don't know the exact term. I call it tar and chip the road, and I don't know what you call it. The, VDOT to Hard and Chip Daniel Road, which is the road I drive. And it's amazing how fast with traffic that just settles in and solidifies. What's the schedule? Are there any other roads in that area of the county that are scheduled to be maintained? Can you get that to me? Yeah, I had a couple people, I mean, the damage that some of these tractor-trailers have done to the shoulders, and they use now Daniel Road as a cut-through from 522 to, I don't know where they're going. That, that did a good job of solidifying the shoulders and at least holding them up through the following winter. So I'd like to see that because there may be some, I don't know what input we have or how much leeway you have, but there may be some other roads that we may want to look at that.
Yeah, so we set up our schedules two years in advance, so we can always take input on that, but the routes that we're working on now, they were decided and put forward.
It was, it was good planning two years ago because the shoulders were really bad on Daniel Road, so. All right, thank you very much. Yes, sir. All right, next presentation is the quarterly update from the Louisiana County Water Authority, and Ms. Bogman is here as the general manager.
Good evening, Chairman Adams and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on the authority's activities over the past month. We have been undertaking a major office cleanout. We had every paid bill in the office from the early 80s when the water authority got started. But these cleaning efforts have not resulted in additional office space or square footage. We're currently under contract to purchase additional office space at our current location. Settlement should occur sometime at the end of July. Supply chain issues continue. Meters, chemicals, things like that are just hard to get. We don't understand it. We've been post-pandemic for quite a while and still are struggling with those things. On June 5th, the Board of Supervisors passed the Water Supply Emergency Ordinance. Thank you very much. Mary Johnson retired June 15th. We finalized new payment options for our customers, and hopefully they will be implemented by July 1st. We've located another funding source for customers with past due balances, and to date, five customers have taken advantage of that opportunity.
Another funding source. Somebody pays it for them?
Pays it for them. Pays the past due. The Board of Directors held a public hearing in May and voted at the conclusion of the public hearing for a 15% rate increase in water and sewer rates to further lessen our dependency on connection fees.
Your board did it. That is amazing. Congratulations.
We have one vacant position for our maintenance tech. If we ever get this position filled, we will be fully staffed for the first time in two years. The SLEDVAC system design at the Northeast Creek Water Treatment Plant is complete, and we expect to go to bid in July with completion late fall, early winter. We made modifications to our loading dock slope area, and that was regraded and repaved, and additional supports have been fabricated and are currently on-site to be installed this week and next week. The only other item left to do to complete that project is to purchase a pallet jack to move pallets of mostly chemicals and materials around. We have dropped loads due to the unsafe conditions, and these steps will ensure that no one gets injured. The basement floor clear roof slope was never properly installed, and we have selected a contractor and have a kickoff meeting on June 26th to correct that. Basement constantly stands with water, and we have electrical outlets not far off the floor, so it's a safety issue for staff. One item remains for our fall protection safety initiative, and that's some concrete work and some fabrication that we're looking at moving forward with to finalize that. The filter building modifications at the regional plant are complete. We need to put the sealant on the outside of the building, and I think it's on-site, but I'm not sure that staff has done that yet. We are currently finalizing an optimization study, which will hopefully demonstrate to DEQ that ammonia limits are not needed, which could help us avoid costly upgrades in 2027. We're still waiting for the draft report. At the wastewater treatment plant at Zion Crossroads, we need to install a diesel storage tank so that one of the generators can only run for 18 to 24 hours with the amount of diesel it has for that tank. So this won't be put next to it so that if we're out for three days like we were for the snowstorm, we have easier access. We did get word today that this job will be completed next week. They will be on-site. We were waiting for the tank for months. At the end of May, the static well levels are down approximately four tenths of a foot from the end of April 23. From May 22 to May 23, the well levels are down approximately one foot. Then we have another table that we watch, and those that's nearest to the production wells, from May 22 to May 23, the well levels were down approximately 21 feet. As of June, the Department of Environmental Quality drought website is indicating a drought watch for the entire region. Groundwater is in a drought warning and stream flow is in a drought emergency. Normal conditions exist for precipitation and reservoir levels. But we did get an inch and a half at my house last night, so.
I said we go break it this week.
We didn't get that much at times.
Spring Creek 1 and 2, the conduit lines and water lines have been installed. The electrician needs to pull the wire and install the generator. The interior plumbing meters and valves need to be installed. Again, that's on hold due to supply chain issues. In the generator pads, concrete needs to be poured. We've not heard anything from Flevanna County on their response to selling excess water capacity. Lake Anna, so I'm going to start with the good news. For the month of May, we met every permit limit and every parameter for our newly acquired wastewater system.
Good job.
Yay, by the skin of our teeth. I will emphasize that. We've installed chemical feed equipment and feel much more confident that the water quality is safer and more reliable. The bad news, the effluent line was pulled up by a boat anchor the weekend of July 10th, 11th, and is floating about four inches to six inches under the surface of the water. We did have buoys put out to identify that, and it's been reported to us that boats just drive between the buoys. It's ridiculousness. We did have a diver inspect the line, and I had a meeting with DEQ today, and we're working to locate or determine our steps forward. I was going to try to talk to Mr. Goodwin about that tonight or tomorrow. This weekend, there was a sewage backup over there in the building where the restaurants are located. This was due to customers disposing of grease down the sinks. On Friday, June 22nd, we are going to be installing some new motors and pumps for the pump station because they're supposed to have four. Two are functioning, and one is barely functioning. So we're going to replace those, and while we're doing that, they're going to inspect the grease traps over there and make sure that they are being maintained.
These are, these are pump stations? The pump stations belonged to us? They all belong to the restaurant?
No, the pump stations are ours. For the PFOS, PFOA Gen X chemicals, a major lawsuit has been settled with companies such as DuPont, who are responsible for the development and application of a lot of those chemicals. The lawsuit settlement is intended to aid utilities in the removal of PFOA, PFAS, and Gen X chemicals. Our sampling schedule has been accelerated, but we still don't know if we have an issue. I'm hoping that we don't. And one company that.
Does this come out of the groundwater?
I'm sorry.
This is coming out of the groundwater?
It's.
Which is discharge water?
It's, it's both. It's contaminating groundwater from effluent discharge because it's in all of us, our systems. It's in Scotchgard, fire suppression foam.
So it starts in the sewer system?
Yeah, yeah.
I was just trying to understand.
It's, it's like Scotchgard. It's, it's in your hamburger wrappers that you get at fast food restaurants. Popcorn, microwave popcorn containers contain a lot of this. And some of the fire suppression foam suppliers have now filed bankruptcy trying to avoid the settlement, which means all litigation stops, so we're still looking at that. We are a part of that suit, but we won't get any money if we don't have any issues, which I'm hoping we don't have any issues. We finally received on the lead and copper stuff guidance May 22nd, and we've finalized the database. Our customer access agreements have been developed and approved by the county attorney's office. The field data gathering sheet has been completed, and the administrative data gathering is underway. underway. So, if the house was built or the business was constructed after April 1st, 1986, we don't have to do anything but say the construction was after the lead ban in Virginia. If it's between 1982 and 1986, then we have to field identify if it is lead or copper.
Between 82 and 86?
From, from 82, when the water plant went online down here, everything at Zion's is gonna be after the lead ban, but there are a few older construction-
We hooked up some older construction, too, haven't we?
I'm sorry?
Haven't we hooked up some older construction in 82?
Yes, yes. Like, uh, on the corner of 15 and 250, the Glass property.
Yeah, well, I mean, even on the system here, haven't we hooked up some older stuff?
Yes.
So, what happens with the pre-82 stuff?
Pre-82, we, we weren't existence at then.
We're not responsible.
We're, it's, if it's not connected to our system, we're not responsible for it.
Well, but I know there's some stuff pre-82 that's connected to your system here.
Yes, yes, and we will have to identify that.
But you only said 82 to 86.
When any new construction, then, we will have to identify it. Any old construction like, uh-
Like, pre-1982 that you ran by and hooked up?
Yes.
Maybe a better word is no connections before 1982 because we didn't have any-
There were no connections.
Right. But there is older construction that we've connected.
So, so, you have to identify any construction maybe between 82 and 86?
Yes.
Or prior, yeah.
But you could've hooked somebody up in 1987 that had a house built in 1970.
And then, we have to identify what their leads, if they have a lead service line or not.
Thank you.
Um, we're hopeful that we can finish the administrative data gathering. Like, we're, we wanna weed out everything we don't have to inspect, um, so that when we send the guys out in the field, um, they know exactly what they have to look at. And we're hoping to be done with the office administrative, um, research on that by October. That will give us a full year to identify in the field anything that could potentially be lead. So, we're working, we're working to complete that regulation by 20, October of '24. And with that, I'll take any questions.
I have, any other? Back to the Lake Anna issue. It, it looks like, I, I think this is twice that it's happened, I think, that I know, that that effluent pipe has been damaged by a boat anchor. See, I don't, I don't know what the answer is, and I know you don't, and I'm not asking for the answer, but it, it looks like that's an issue that we've got to figure out how we stop that from happening. I don't know how we stop it exactly from happening. I did go down there by boat the other day, uh, saw the buoys and saw people going through the buoys. So, obviously, that doesn't, hasn't stopped. But, and I don't know, maybe when we, we build the new plant, maybe the piping is different. I don't know. But that, that's, that's an issue because that, you know, but I do wanna emphasize my understanding that there has not been any leakage of sewage or anything into the lake because there'd been no discharge earlier that day, 12 hours before, and nothing since then. Is that correct?
Nothing since that time, no. We will, we will probably be in a pump-and-hall situation until we can get this completely figured out, which we're hoping by Fourth of July weekend, uh, because we figure that's gonna be a really busy time, although I heard it was really busy this weekend over there. We're hoping to get that all sorted out. Um, I can tell you that, um, the repairs that were done over the years were not, um, to the specifications that that pipe was installed. Instead of, um, concrete structures that were designed to hold that pipe down, um, there were repairs made with, um, two cinder blocks that they filled with concrete, and they put wire into that concrete. And when they sat it down, they sat a cinder block on either side and sort of tied, like you would a bread bag, tied the wires together to hold it in place. Um, in some cases, it was nylon rope that, um, we, that we have found that was used, which is, you know, that's after being exposed to the elements underwater, it's not gonna hold up. So, um, so, I'm, I'm hopeful that what we fix it, how we fix it, it will stay fixed. And there may be some more modifications that we need to make in the future with the upgrade, but, um-
I'm sure, well, I mean, I have every, whi, which in my mind validates one of the reasons it was a good idea for the, the county government to, to do that because I have much, uh, much more confidence in your ability and your staff's ability to do it the right way and protect the, the water quality of the lake than I do any subdivision or homeowners' association or anything like that.
The one benefit that we have on staff is Randy Gray, our wastewater operations manager, ran that plant many, many years ago. And when he went over there the first time, he said, "This is not set up the way it was." I mean, we have pipes terminated. We have, you know, wires cut. So, um, he put things back together, um, the way that it was intended, and the water quality just immediately got so much better. And, um, we would've had much better, um, results on our DMR this, this time, um, had we had everything put together, you know, going into May as opposed to taking it over May 1st, trying to sort everything out, and then by the end of the month. So, I think next month, we'll have, um, even better.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. And I, I know it's, if you remember, um, the very first visit I made when I was elected, you and I went to look at that plant because of the condition that plant was in, so. I appreciate that.
I can tell you the grounds look better. Um, our, our grounds person has gone over there, and he's maintained it, cut trees back, cut, um, um, poison ivy off of the fence. It looks, it looks better. So, um, it, it's been a gargantuan effort, and every member of our staff that's had, you know, a finger in that is, has just been absolutely wonderful. So, um, they've done a superb job.
We'll thank them on our behalf.
Yes, sir.
Is the pipe still floating, or have you all-
It's still floating. We're trying to determine the best way, um, to, to put it back down where it's supposed to be.
Can't get a couple more cinder blocks?
We're gonna get the concrete structures that were intended to hold it down. We think that'll be a better, um, fix for that than, than just cinder blocks.
I'm just saying, but keeping a boat from hitting it if it's-
I'd rather the boat hit the concrete structure than my pipe.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for your work over there as well. All right. Uh, next, we move to, um, committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? I have one. So, and I think Mr. Coon, yeah, I'm gonna ask Mr. Coon to address this, too, but, um, we do have a, um, draft of, uh, short-term rental, um, regulations to send back to the Planning Commission. We have, um, we've had, Mr. Gentry and I are on that committee. Uh, we've started meetings last year. I'll let you go into that because there's been various reasons that we've had to, to move rather slowly, so.
Yes, sir. Good evening, board and chairman. So, part of the reason why we had to do this is, as you all remember, in September, we had this on a public hearing that got pulled off based on legislation that was in front of General Assembly. What we were proposing was to use the short-term rental state code of Virginia and their enforcement of that, which gave the authority for us to have ordinances for, for short-term rentals specifically. However, that is the entire reason why the General Assembly was talking about provisions of that chapter. So, we felt that with all of those conversations and potential changes, it'd be better to bring it back to the zoning code, which, of course, the General Assembly does give us the authority to maintain our zoning code and land use that way. So, that's one of the things that we're doing, um, as well as, there's gonna be a little bit less specificity, but it casts a broader net just to ensure that people abide by these regulations.
Do we may have any questions? I just wanna say thank you. Appreciate your, your help. Yes, I'm sorry.
No, I don't have a question. I, I-
He doesn't have a question.
I think I have a comment. I think as we move forward, um, I know that there are certain areas of our county that we definitely are having problems with short-term rentals in. But I know that on the other end of the county, which is my end of the county, um, and also part of the Patrick Henry District, I've been speaking to a lot of folks who run some really nice, um, short-term rentals, and they're respectable and are not having these problems. And I just wanna make sure, I see there are certain exemptions in here, that when we do pass an ordinance, that we're not, um, we, that we don't, we will, I don't want to affect those residents in, in that section of the county that are having these problems. And, um, I wanna make sure that they can keep their livelihood and, um, moving forward. And I know there's some retired schoolteachers out that way that, uh, rely on their short-term rental income, um, on their farm and so forth. And I see there's some protection in there for them, but I just wanna make sure we don't put a blanket across the county that hurts other landowners on other ends of the county where we are not having this issue.
And you're right, there are some, in these proposals, there's some safeguards built in it, so that's true.
And I'm glad to see that there are safeguards, um, because I would not be voting for this if there were, when, when we do do, go to that level, um, if, if it did affect other ends of the county.
Mr. Brenner?
I've just briefly read through this, and it certainly looks like it addresses some of the problems, but I'm like, uh, Ms. Jones, there are some places in the county where they not, haven't become a problem. And, uh, you know, I, I'm not worried about those places either, but, you know, in what I had heard before, in these residential subdivisions where this has become a problem, and which is the very reason it got to us, uh, I've stated before, and I'm making it real clear, I'm not supporting it unless it's by CUP in residential zones, so.
How about an egg zone? How would you support it?
Now, in an egg zone, if you own enough acreage, then I think you follow the, the state stuff.
And it says right here in an egg zone outside the growth area that you gotta have CUP.
Well, that might be-
I'm just reading what the words are, sir.
Right, you're right. What I'm saying is-
If it's a new one, you're grandfathered in if you're currently, and, and I'm a little-
If it's a new one, I mean, I-
But if it's a new one, I'm questioning that because I, I-
What I'm saying is, I'm, I'm in agreement to send us to the Planning Commission, and they do what they want with it, but, uh, I doubt very seriously if I'm gonna support it.
The way it's written.
The way it's written or anything that comes back in a residential zone that says you can do it in any fashion other than having a CUP.
The good news is, we'll have an opportunity to look at that in a couple months.
Ms. Chairman-
Yes, sir.
Ms. Chairman, um, since you're the chair, um, I'll, I'll make the motion to send it to the Planning Commission.
Second.
And back to us.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passed, you may ask. Thank you, Mr. Coon. All right. On to the highlight of the meeting, be after Ally's appearance, and that would be the county administrators' report.
Oh, the second highlight.
The second highlight.
Sub-highlight.
I don't think we do.
I wanna make a comment about board appointments. Uh, there's two vacancies in the Commission on Aging, one from, uh, Green Springs, and one from Mineral. Just happened in the last couple of weeks.
Y'all are slacking. I'm just saying, maybe you should've got some board appointments in there.
I had one last time. I know, I know. I'll, I'll find some people. Mr. Goodwin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple items to bring to your attention. Your monthly reports for the month of May are included in my report. Um, if you haven't taken a look at those over the past few months, they are really good, and I really commend the department heads for taking the time to develop and maintain those three years' worth of rolling data, which really helps to show trends for what our departments are doing. It's super helpful. I do wanna draw your attention specifically, again, this month, to our, um, increase in volunteer response in the form of duty crew hours. That's on pages 56 through 58. It's in there on a per-station basis, and then Chief Hawke also put it in on a month, on a year-to-date, per-month, uh, basis on page 58, if memory serves. And, again, I, I salute our, our stations that are making an effort to get duty crews in, and that's really helping our response on a county-wide basis. Interestingly enough, uh, call volumes are down slightly this year-to-date, um, just a little bit.
With cut-in staff?
We'll see if the trend, we'll see if the trend continues, uh, but, uh, things are, things are going well in that regard. Um, I, I do wanna take a moment to echo, uh, our appreciation from a staff point, uh, Manager Bachman for her efforts at Lake Anna and just of the Water Authority in general. She is a pleasure to work with, and their attention to detail, uh, at the new plant has been commendable, and I am very grateful for it. So, thank you very much for that. And I would also like to take a moment to recommend, to recognize my assistant, Alex. Many of you, uh, probably know that we went through a new board packet system transition over the past couple of months. It is a monumental effort to do one of those transitions. Getting your board packets together, uh, takes a lot of effort on the staff's part. All those review chains start in specific departments, and that system warehouses the entire thing. By the time this came through for developing our first board packet, um, which was a short one for this meeting, it went very, very smoothly, and that is a credit to her efforts. So, I'm very grateful to Alex for her efforts on your behalf. And then, one last thing.